Welcome to the City of Newport Regular Meeting of the Board of Commissioners, April 24, 2023. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Here.
Commissioner Smith Morrow.
Here.
Commissioner Rektin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fennell. Mayor Kaduli.
Here. Commissioner's Order Number 33.
In order to the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, promoting Nolan Cresser to the position of engineer medic in the Newport Fire EMS Department effective February 8, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Chief Pluso.
Mayor, board, Mr. Cresser has been on the department since November of 2020. Nolan has been in an acting role since December of 2022. Since then, engineer testing has been completed. Nolan has done very well in his acting role, and I have no doubt that he will continue to do well after he is promoted this evening. Nolan Cresser.
Thank you, chief. Any questions on the board?
Thank you for your work.
Good work. Please call the roll, Tiffany.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Mayor Kaduli.
Yes.
Nolan's fiancee, Kaylee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We always take a five-minute break to allow for some quick photos, and we're going to do so tonight.
If we can clear the tables.
We're fine over here.
Trust me, it's right here. Oh, yeah, you get higher, you get higher.
You been busy? Been in town or?
I've been out of town for Easter.
Okay.
One thing you can, we all run out of heat.
I have seen you in there early. And it's looking great. All the flowers are starting to pop up. Awesome.
It's pretty, and I like it.
Yes.
I don't need a therapist, you know.
All right, Tiffany, can you call us back in, please?
Commissioner Redwansky.
Here.
Commissioner Smith Morrow.
Here.
Commissioner Rektin.
Here.
Mayor Kaduli.
Here. Continuing on with the agenda, public hearings. We have no public hearings tonight, nor do we have presentations, awards, or proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of Commissioners' Order 38 through 40. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
You want me to address that first?
Yes, please.
Okay, so simply on the consent agenda tonight, for those in the audience, it's three property assessment moratoriums for, and the good thing about this, which is good for the west side of town, all three of these are on the west end.
Any questions on the board? This is substantial investment in some very beautiful structures, and it's going to be a major improvement, and looking forward to getting completed. Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yeah.
Mayor Kaduli.
Yes. Public forum. Comments about city services not on the agenda are allowed during public forum portion of the regular meeting. If you have a comment, please come to the mic at this time. Public forum is closed. Approval of minutes, the regular minutes and special minutes of April.
So moved.
Second. Any comments or corrections? Saying none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Mayor Kaduli.
Yes. Old business, none. New business, Commissioners' Order Number 19.
In order to the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing and directing city manager Thomas J. Fromme to execute a development agreement with the Newport Hotel Associate LLC regarding the Margaritaville Resort Project.
So moved.
Second.
City manager Fromme.
Yes, mayor, I do want to point out that we do have Mr. Spoor here tonight to give a executive summary description of this project and the mechanism behind it, but I do want to point out this is basically one of the final pieces of the Newport on the levy puzzle. So a hotel was long planned for the Newport on the levy from day one. There was one in the works back around 2008, and due to the economic downturn there, that went belly up, for lack of a better term. And so this is really an exciting day for the levy, the city of Newport, and the entire greater Cincinnati region. I really think this is going to be a showcase for the levy and for the city and for all of us, and I think it's also going to be a great attraction for Newport on the levy as it moves forward. So I'm really pleased that they have brought this forward to us to work on, work, excuse me, work with.
Thank you, Mr. Spoor, for joining us.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. I'm Dick Spoor with the Keating, Muth, and Klecap Law Firm, and I...
You introduced your principals here.
I was just about to do that, Tom, but thank you for reminding me. And with me tonight are the principals of the company that's supplying, Tim Perry, whom you know, is also with North American Properties, was instrumental in the redevelopment and continuing redevelopment of the levy, and Jim Stormont, who has worked with Tim before. They're both from Atlanta, but they're both happy to be up here in the northland, or almost the northland. But they'll be available to answer any questions that you have about the project in particular. And as the manager said, I'll give you a summary of what's in the agreement and what's in the transaction. This is, in its simplest form, another industrial revenue bond in the series of those bonds that have been issued for the levy. Back in 2018, the North American Properties purchased the levy from the former owners who had owned it since 2000, the price group you all dealt with. And in that 2018 transaction, there was a revenue bond issued, a 30-year revenue bond, and the bond was used to purchase and make some basic improvements for the levy, and as Tom pointed out, it contemplated a hotel the entire time. The original authorized amount of that bond issue was $200 million. They used 80 million of that to purchase the levy and to make the basic improvements, and this project will complete that $200 million issue. The cost of the bond issue for this project will be up to $120 million. So between the two issues, there'll be 200 million. The original bond issue went for 30 years. That's the custom and the practice that you followed in the past. Because we're five years into that, we are asking in the agreement for an extension of five years on that bond issue, but I want to be very careful what that extension involves. The extension will only apply to the Margaritaville portion. The original 80 million will still be a 30-year period, so after 30 years, the levy will go back on the tax duplicate for full taxation. Margaritaville will get the additional five years that were chopped off from 18, and their project will go back on the tax rolls in 2054. So it's a layering, if you will. The major piece of the transaction involves a 3% surcharge. Let me describe that, because it's important to distinguish that surcharge from a tax. It is not a tax. There will be a 3% surcharge on every retail transaction in the Margaritaville project. That will include rooms, meals, drinks, souvenirs. There'll be a lot of shopping opportunities at this project, and that 3% applies only to this project. It does not apply elsewhere on the levy, does not apply to any other hotel, so it's not a hotel motel tax. It is a distinct surcharge. That will be collected just like a sales tax. So the way that will work is, at the point of sale, there'll be a 3% charge in addition to the regular state sales tax and the regular hotel motel tax. So any tax that would be on a transaction will be included plus this surcharge. So the point of sale will be where it's imposed, and it will be technically collected by the city by the report. Every quarter, or I believe every six months, I think we're doing...
Every quarter.
Every quarter, there'll be a report of these sales to the city, and the monies will be paid to the city. Those monies will be used to supplement the project costs and also will be used to promote tourism to, at the hotel or the resort, I should say. So it's a self-contained universe. We were going to do this on the Skywheel, unfortunately, that did not happen, but we had the same basic structure proposed for the Skywheel.
Also, to go back further in time, we also had a similar instrument with the aquarium.
Correct.
On aquariums.
Right, there was a surcharge on every aquarium ticket, yes.
But also, I do, not trying to interrupt you, but something I think is important for the board and for everyone to know, this is a voluntary thing. This is not something being mandatorily imposed by the city.
Oh, yes, most definitely. It's voluntary on behalf of the developer. And that's basically it in the agreement. What we're talking about, it's a revenue bond, so what happens, the next step is if it's your pleasure to approve it, we will make an application to the state, and they will conduct a hearing, which we attend virtually now. I don't know if they've gone back live yet, but that hearing will occur, and presumably, if everything goes well, it'll be approved by the state, and then it comes back to your commission for final, the actual issuance of the bond. So it's a three-step. Tonight, again, if it's your pleasure to adopt it, state hearing and approval, and back to the commission for the actual bond issuance. That whole process takes about four to six months, so it will be yet this year. That's the technical part, and so if there are any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them, or the project, the folks are here too.
Any questions on the board?
Why don't we talk about the pretty pictures?
Tell us all about this new project. One second, though, I want to get into the technical for one second before we get to the pictures, and just, if you could take a moment to explain the 3% surcharge and how narrow the definition that the state allows that to be achieved. This isn't something that can be overlaid over our entire city, it's only for these types of projects.
Correct. This is just for this project, and it only works because it's voluntary. It cannot be imposed on anyone. If they ask for it, then it can be imposed, similarly to a special assessment. I compare it most to, say, an assessment for streetlights or sidewalks. You can voluntarily petition the government for the assessment, and the use of it will be, again, only in the...
District. It's defined as a district, but the entire hotel will be the district.
Yes. Everything built over that pad, yes, the hotel, the resort, I should say.
All right, I just thought that it needs some more clarification, and I appreciate you spending the time on that. Now let's get to the good part, the fun part, the storytelling and what this may or may not look like in the future.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. I'm Jim Stormont, and with Tim Perry, we were partners on a fabulous hotel down in the north side of Atlanta in Alpharetta, Georgia, and I've been in the hotel business for 35 years and developing hotels. We used to manage hotels as well, but for the last 15, it's just development. And I've had the good fortune of working with numerous, I guess 12 different cities, doing sort of what we call public-private, or, you know, working with IRB bonds, or some form of combined contribution to the project, and had, everyone's been a success, and they've been from the east coast down to Midwest and the south, southwest, and Georgia, and Tennessee, and Virginia, and so we've had good success on these projects in the past. What we're planning here is something, I think it's going to be really impactful for not only Newport, but the region and Cincinnati. It's designed to be a destination. This isn't a small little motel that attracts passersby. This is something where we're going to be spending, and the 3% is partially to help us fund the marketing and sales efforts, which are going to be huge, to bring people in from Ohio and from Louisville, or from Columbus, or, you know, throughout the whole region. So, you know, we will have 264 rooms, we call them keys, 264 keys. We have numerous restaurants and bars, all part of this Margaritaville branding, which is, we have a license-to-chill bar, we have a 5 o'clock somewhere bar on the roof, which is going to be really awesome. We have a JWB Grill, which is a nice restaurant, the Joe Merchant's Coffee Shop, retail sales for all the goodies. If you've seen the Margaritaville, I, to tell you the truth, my history's been mostly Marriott-type of properties and autograph collections and that type of thing, but the Margaritaville brand fits so perfectly with the Newport on the levy, the destination, the aquarium, all the restaurants and activities, and the new Shiners, you know, music venues. So we think it, not to mention, this region is a very strong parrot head region, and I learned as part of this project that the word parrot head was coined here in the Cincinnati market area, so that's sort of fun. But the Margaritaville brand of hotels and restaurants has been truly booming, and it's extremely popular for all levels of demand. It's not just, you know, the couple that's going away on Saturday night and wants to have a fun, you know, resort experience. It's groups, it's transient, it's corporate, it's pleasure, it's leisure, it's, you know, baseball games, pregame, you know, it's going to have a lot of demand sources to, in my experience, the best hotel and resort destinations have multiple different demands. You know, you can't just have one type of demand, but you have to have multiple demands to make it successful. And so we're excited about it. The rooftop is going to, and I don't have pretty pictures to show at this point, but we will, next time we can get back, but we, the rooftop has the 5 o'clock somewhere bar, and a pool, and an incredible event facility of like 2,000 square feet, so if you're having a wedding, or a reception, or a corporate event, or a party, you have a beautiful covered facility with outdoor patio space looking out above, across the Ohio River to downtown Cincinnati. It's really going to be something very unique and very special. So, let's see, that's a...
You're good. I don't need any pictures now, I got it.
Yeah, you'll want to go visit the rooftop event, I can tell you. So we're excited to be here.
Any questions on the board?
About how many jobs do you think that this will bring to Newport?
It will be roughly about 200.
Very good. Thank you.
Most important jobs, or not the most important jobs, but critical for us during the construction phase, because that's actually a significant amount of payroll during the kind of...
It is.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Tim, do you have access to the tourism tax credit for this project as well?
We're working on it. That's the next step. So we've, we went through the tourism tax credit process originally, but the scale of the hotel that we planned at that point has, you know, tripled.
Right.
So we've got, we've got some work to do. We're already working with, you know, their consultants and the application and Commonwealth to go through it. So this will be a very key part of doing this, that we've got to put together. So we've got a lot of boxes left to check, to get y'all's attention tonight and getting us going, so it means a lot for us, it means a lot when we go to the state.
Thanks, Tim.
Well, thank you for your time. Did you have questions?
I do. So I believe the construction won't begin until this three-step process of approval is complete, probably, right?
We're about a year away from construction starting.
Okay, and then, my next question is, when are you targeting completion?
February of '26. It takes, it takes every bit of like 25 months to get all the way through, have a soft opening, and launch it.
Before the Cincinnati Reds have the first pitch in '26.
There you go.
I like it.
With the Reds' performance, you don't need any marketing.
Well, thanks again for coming in today. You painted a good picture, but I've actually been to some of your properties across the country. It's a high-quality product, and everybody there, across every age demographic, has a blast, so looking forward to being a part of our picture in Newport and making greater connectivity about all of our great spaces. Thanks for your willingness to invest and being a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Any other questions on the board? Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin.
Yes.
Mayor Kaduli.
Yes. Commissioners' Order Number 39. Wait, wait, wrong. I went to the top of the page. There we go. Commissioners' Order Number 37.
In order to the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, authorizing and so directing Mayor Thomas L. Kaduli Jr. to execute a municipal road aid and cooperative program agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Mistible Aid regarding municipal road aid funds for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, as provided for in the Kentucky state statutes and accepting all streets subject thereto as being a part of the City of Newport.
So moved.
Second.
City manager Fromme.
Yes, mayor, typically, we conduct a public hearing on this, but that requirement has been eliminated by the state legislative body, but in this regard, on our public hearings, we always stated that this money is put into the Public Works Fund and being used for ongoing street repairs, which are numerous throughout the year. So we do not dedicate these particular funds to any project at all. We have a separate fund that we use for the insurance premium tax that we use for infrastructure projects like paving roads, or alleys, or whatever. So that money's allocated every year from that source, and this money's put directly into the Public Works Fund. So roughly, we're getting about $340,000 from the course of the year from the municipal road fund. I do want to point out, that's dropped quite a bit over the last 10 years. When we had a big drop in gas prices, the price of the gas, hence the taxes, dropped considerably, and there's a prohibition on it rising back up, so it's going to take us years to get back up to where we were. At one point, we were over $400,000 a year, so we're about 340 now, so we still have a long way to go to catch up where we were 10 years ago.
Didn't they make one correction on that law, though? Because basically, it can fall any amount, but not rise more than 3%?
It can't fall like that anymore.
Yes, that's the fix, okay.
But there's also, it can't, it can't go up more than like 10% a year, so that's where the problem is too. It's going to take us years, like I said, to get back to where we were.
And we're not alone. It hit the entire state that way, and if you had a larger amount, you had a larger loss, so...
Yes.
The additional addition that people aren't using gas as much anymore, you know?
It's true.
One thing I do, or something new on here, too, we talked about this the other day, accepting all streets subject thereto. We have a list, it didn't come with the state's paperwork. It came Friday from the Ad District, was it from the Ad District, Tiffany?
Correct.
The Ad District, want me to verify all the streets that were on the list, while we couldn't do it on Friday afternoon, so I had code enforcement go out today to verify these were all actual streets, because we had to verify these were streets before we could vote on it, so that'll be up at the next meeting for the, on that list.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the board?
Only that, Tom. So last year and I...
So, last year when I was here, you'd talk a lot about the rising costs with repaving streets. Is that still something that we will have to deal with this year when we work through this project?
Yes, last year, we were able to do two projects, well, we have, we're getting ready to finish the project from last fiscal, or this current fiscal year, in Google Alley in May. And, but we were only able to do a short part of Fourth Street and parts of Google Alley. So, our money's not going anywhere near as far as it did.
Do more with less.
Fact of life.
Right. Have to do more with less. Yeah, okay.
But that's the fact of life.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Mayor Caddoli?
Yes. Commissioner's Order Number 41.
In order of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, authorizing and directing Human Resource Coordinator Emily Moore to execute a joint or agreement with the Kentucky Public Employees Deferred Compensation Authority regarding public employees deferred compensation plans.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so what this is simply, it allows us to remain with the public deferred compensation authority. So, our employees have the privilege or the right to put money into deferred comp 401Ks or 457 or Roth, based on their choosing. And without us signing this agreement, they would not be able to participate. What happened was, in I guess the last session, Dan, they created a new entity. So, we had an agreement with the previous entity, but now this, we have to sign one with the new entity that deals with this. We've been in this deferred compensation program since the late 90s.
Any other questions on the board? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Mayor Caddoli?
Yes. Commissioner's Ordinance Number Two.
This is just a first reading. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Section 93.63 of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Outdoor Dining and Seating Upon City Sidewalks and/or Rightaways and Providing a Penalty for the Violation thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so this has been a long time in the making for a variety of reasons. I'm glad we've got to this point tonight. So, I want to give a little bit of history here. This is not a new ordinance, for those that do not know that. This is nothing that just was dreamt up and created over the last year or two. This ordinance has been in effect for well over 20 years in the current form. So, we realized after a lot of requests and some criticisms perhaps over the years that there needed to be changes to the existing ordinance for this. So, I recall when this started, and my predecessor and the original people that requested an ordinance like this was Dave Jose for Aitton York and Dixie Chili. So, they were the first two that actually applied under this ordinance. There were a variety of establishments throughout the city that had seating outside, chairs, tables at various locations, and the city never really dealt with it on official issue. They just let them do it. But this was one where they, because it was Momma Street and York Street, two of the main business districts, that's why we created the ordinance back in the early 2000s for this. So, this is making amendments for what we feel were deficiencies in the existing ordinance. And as you go through there, it didn't really, it said outdoor dining specifically. Well, outdoor dining was not really the way it was followed, because it was outdoor seating, so we put outdoor dining or seating. So, it was making changes like that as a buff. We've also noticed a problem with just alcohol only, and we didn't think that's appropriate. So, those people that already are in existence, they're grandfathered in, but any new applicants will not be permitted to do that for a lot of reasons. It became very problematic over a period of time with that calls for service and things like that. And so, this does allow, in the residential districts, there was a great demand for that from numerous sources, not limited to one or two, but many requests over the years for doing this. So, this is why we did it. Typically, we don't take action on ordinances unless there's an exhibited demand to do that. There's a lot of work involved, so we'd rather not do it if there's no need for it. But in this case, we all felt there was a need. So, that pretty much, there is a additional requirements. The ordinance allow or call for regulations to be imposed by the administration. So, for, since the ordinance has been in effect, we have administrative regulations, basically a contract that the business owner has to sign. What that deals with is the rules and regs of conduct, keeping the area orderly and clean, keeping the equipment, AKA the seats and tables, in good fashion, and also monitoring the behavior of their patrons. And also, they have to be in a specific area. So, we actually have a map that's done by the officers when they go to the scene, to each spot. They draw a diagram of where the seats and tables are allowed to be. So, that's, that's how that is. Now, I've had good suggestions, Commissioner Rechtin gave these to me, two suggestions about having placards for patrons only on the tables and also stanchions and ropes to delineate that area. So, since we're just now imposing that, any new applicant would have to follow that right away. But then the existing ones will give them till April 1st of next year, next season, to follow those new guidelines. So, that's pretty much, if there's any questions.
Questions on the board?
Just a comment. Finally, 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 this is something I've been pushing for since day one. Thank you.
I do have a comment and a question. Question is, I think to Dan, there's been some discussion about expansions of nonconforming uses. Would you walk me through that, how our zoning ordinance and our, this law will not be in conflict?
It's my opinion that this has nothing to do with zoning.
Could you pull the mic closer to you, if you would?
It's my opinion that this matter has nothing to do with the zoning ordinance of the city. The use is already there, it's a permitted use. What this was meant to do in the beginning was to create the ability for someone to put, for lack of a better term, impediments, tables and chairs on the city right of way. It's sidewalks are being used. All they're doing is using that premise or the premises on the sidewalks for that purpose. It permits them to do it. It originally started with alcohol, because unless you did this, you weren't allowed to carry alcohol outside of the building itself. You couldn't drink it on the sidewalk, it would be subject to public intoxication or whatever else. So, that was created for that purpose, and then it expanded to non-alcohol, so that people could sit outside and eat and drink coffee, whatever, which is non-alcohol related. But the bottom line is, they're using the city right of way. This is a permit for that purpose, to cover those contingencies. It is not an expansion of a nonconforming use under the zoning laws or guidelines.
Okay, thanks, Dan. The only other comment I have is, Tom, thanks for sharing those regs with us. Those administrative regulations are really important, and it's really good to understand that this is a recallable situation, too, so that if the, if the behavior does get out of hand, those people that are but the, or live near there, have a right to the quiet enjoyment of their homes. And if that's violated, that can, can come back. So, thanks for sharing that, and thanks for including those things that I asked for. That's all I have, Tom.
Good. Go ahead, Julie.
I'm really excited about this. I think a lot of, obviously, a lot of work has gone into this. I appreciate how much detail there is defining the eligible properties, the conditions under which somebody may apply, the process, the rules of conduct, and the review that will be done on this. And I, I think it's, it's very strong, and I really appreciate this opportunity to take this forward for Newport.
Thanks, Julie. This has been a journey. This didn't happen overnight. It started in the early 2000s, and it's been amended multiple times. And these things sometimes come with conflict, but anything worth doing takes a lot of work sometimes. This getting across the finish line identifies, first of all, the things that Julie just shared. Most of those center on safety, making sure that patrons are safe when they're walking by. Dan brought up the legal right to actually carry alcohol outside. That was a part of this, that as you get deeper into it, you got to understand all those lawful elements. But I think one of the most important things we need to remember is, this is a privilege, an earned privilege, that hopefully everyone is able to accommodate and meet these regulations and be responsible owners. And this is going to be a great program. People like to be outside. COVID proved it, and it was, it was popular before that. But since then, it's how people prefer to be, is outside in the elements whenever the weather's nice. So, to ensure that ability for all of our spaces that qualify, it's taken a lot of work, a lot of staff time, a lot of legal time, and your efforts are appreciated. With that, please call the roll.
We don't need one for a first reading.
Oh, that's right. Dumber.
We do, we do, though, Tim.
We, we have a tradition in Newport.
Okay.
It's a tradition in the City of Newport, every time.
Sorry, I was not aware.
You are correct legally.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Mayor Caddoli?
Yes. I guess that's the first one of those you had to bear.
Yeah.
Commissioner's Ordinance Number Four.
Three.
Three.
Three, okay.
Again, this is a first reading, ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Chapter 111, alcoholic beverage licensing procedure, Section 111.58, subsections D4 and E2 of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Extended Hours License.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Okay, this has been a long path as well. So, after much debate internally, and I cannot even go think about how much time we've spent on this topic. And a lot of it's misunderstanding or misinterpretations over the years about a variety of things. So, when we, I was looking at this and talking to legal staff quite a while ago about what, it's like we had no teeth. And I'm sure that my staff got tired of hearing that toothless tiger comment. But the reality of it was, the existing ordinance is very weak. The extended hours is a privilege, or like a driver's license, it's actually a privilege, it's not a right. So, if you don't operate your business in a proper manner, or you don't police your patrons, or you don't police up outside and litter and everything else, noise and everything, then you shouldn't have the right to have an extended, the privilege to have an extended hours permit. So, the state dictates up to your base license. We have a base license, and in Newport, the base license is 1 a.m. Our extended hours allows them to stay open till 2:30. That's in our domain. It's not the state ABC. Frankfurt doesn't care. Once you get past that base time, they mandate to midnight. So, if we wanted to make the base license midnight, we could. Not, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying we could. So, anything beyond midnight, though, is the local city's domain or control. So, that's why I'm using the term privilege. Now, they pay for that privilege for a license fee. It's nominal, in my opinion. It's $3,000, I think, for that. But it is a benefit to a lot of the businesses, or else they wouldn't do it for that. But anyway, based on the old, the, what we're trying to amend, we feel that the ordinance was very weak. No teeth in there. This allows the ABC administrator of the city to conduct an annual, it mandates an annual review, mandates, not makes it optional, it's a mandatory thing. And they can not renew the license if the bar exhibits certain behaviors during the license year, which are spelled out in the ordinance. So, if there's a number, excessive number of police calls. How we determine that, based on all the other bars. So, if you have 10 bars and the average is three calls, and this one has 33, they're, they're an way excessive number. So, this is what we did. So, we've been tracking that for the last few years, the number of calls to each bar. And we come up with an average, and you'll see some stick out more than others for that. So, that allows us then, there again, to either revoke or not renew the extended hours. So, I know some people, there's questions about this, but trust me, this is something that we feel comfortable in, it gives us much more authority in dealing with some of these problems, especially problem areas. If you're not a problem, have nothing to worry about.
On the board? Comment I'd like to make is that, you know, going through this process, and again, all the staff time going through this and making sure that this is right, making sure that we've got the right checks and balances, we can have fun, but we need to be safe. And that is something that I think is paramount, should be an important takeaway for folks that are here or that are watching this online. Again, thank you. Dan, John, thank you.
I'd like to reiterate again, this is a privilege. I think that the proposed amendment here will bring a lot more accountability and really allow our staff who are watching and taking care to make sure this process is followed have a way to do it. I agree. I think it appeared to be quite, quite weak before, and so now having multiple ways of receiving annual review or complaint and shall conduct an annual review, and that's something I'm very interested in following, because I, I don't think that having ordinances that sound good but aren't followed are worth anything. So, I'm going to count on this to be, you know, the teeth that you need to get it done.
I'm sorry, if I know some other, but I do want to add something for the board's application, too. Just so everyone knows and everyone in the audience knows, we have been tracking this. So, on a daily basis, what happens, Mr. Hayden meets with staff, and they actually track every day, except they're, they catch up on Monday. So, they actually track the calls to every alcohol establishment in the city. And we keep logs of that, so on an ongoing basis. Now, if we have some major incident, we don't have to wait till the end of the license year, we can deal with it then. But they are tracking that, they're doing a really good job. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that's right. And this has just been part of doing, we've gotten a lot more aggressive as the needs of the city have changed in the level of tours that people are out, and to get it almost much higher than it might have been, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. So, there were just some concerns as we worked through this. I think this ordinance fixes a whole lot of issues that we're going to have, as far as that's concerned, and I think it's a very good solution.
I think we recognized a few years ago that alcohol contributes a lot to our problems, and we impose a significant fee, tax, 3% Tom?
Mm-hmm.
3% on that, because of that. And I am pleased with seeing us do things like this. It harkens back to days long ago when the ABC administrator had some say in the behaviors in these bars. So, I'm, I'm very pleased with it. Thanks.
I think it's important that what we've been doing is measuring it. You know, this is data-driven, it's measured. We have to match our cost centers to our revenue. The fee for alcohol was trying to match those to deal with the challenge. But if that challenge is so overwhelming, we have to have the ability to revoke these licenses and have a process to do it. It's taken a while, but having it measurable is incredibly important. In our city, what was the latest the license was? Was it 5 a.m. at one point?
We used to have the 5 a.m. law.
There was a 5 a.m. law. And what happened at that time, because it was in my youth, people would all leave Cincinnati because their license, I think, was 3 a.m. or 4 a.m., and they would all go to the bars that were open at that point. And there were more problems than we can ever imagine than there are today. However, we changed that to eliminate those problems. Through the years, we've had discussions about whether or not extended licenses are viable, and should we just go back and get rid of the 2:30 to not deal with those issues? This is balancing the scale, trying to strike a balance of being a fun city, but also being a place where you can actually enjoy your experience without having a troubled situation. And I think you strike the chord with this legislation. And with that, Tiffany, please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Mayor Caddoli?
Yes. Commissioner ordinance number four.
First reading and ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Section 32.064 of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Composition of the Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, actually, this one should probably actually come after the next one because all the only change I made was to indicate that the definition that's in the next ordinance is being referred to in this one.
Why'd you put them in this order?
Didn't, but I should.
Okay.
No, it doesn't matter.
All right.
You just point out like one reference.
Yes.
Instead of getting into a long conversation over what this is, the next one, clarify it.
All right. Any questions on this ordinance? Let's let's go back, as he said, in case there are questions on the next ordinance. Commissioners ordinance number five.
Don't you want to take a vote on the other one?
I thought we'd go to the fifth one first and then go back to the other.
An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Newport, Kentucky, amending Section 32.061 regarding the definition of preservation-related professional and the historic preservation.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Tom or Dan?
It really gets down to the fact about finding people that can serve under the strict definition that we had. We got the same thing with another that we pulled off of the agenda, as you noticed, on the on the Urban Design Review Board. So we have the same issue. We don't have enough people with those certifications that can serve. So what Dan and legal staff did is they expanded what is ineligible for this, which we feel we're comfortable with. As you can see, that quite extensive list there of what you become qualified from.
So it's improved the scope and experiences that qualify to serve in that board.
Larger pool.
So that the pool is bigger. Yes. Any other questions on the board?
No, I think that's really good, though. I think it can make the commission a lot stronger by having a broader scope and range of experience.
Yes, it's definitely more diverse. There's a lot of diversity in these experiences.
Yeah, I went through several iterations of this and came up with the definition based upon the U.S. Government Department of Interiors definition and morphed it into this, which is the one that's expanded like you see here. So it gives more ability for more people to be under this definition and act for the historic preservation board.
Only comment in that, as we look at the Buena Vista Historic District, we think about the makeup of these boards is something that we really have to consider as part of that ongoing dialogue. Thank you. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Mayor Caddully?
Yes. And now we're going to go back to Commissioners ordinance number four.
An ordinance? Okay, I was gonna say.
So there's a motion and a second. Any questions on the board?
So Mike makes a very valid point here tonight is as we look at other districts, we've weighted this very heavily. And we should be cognizant of the fact that maybe we need to change those and be flexible with the people that are on the numbers from the neighborhood. So I I like that suggestion from Mike. I appreciate that. That's all.
I agree. Any other comments?
No, it's but the the composition talks about seven members, and it does say at least two members shall be from the East Row, at least one York Street, at least two that meet the qualifications of the preservation-related professional. And that still leaves a couple additional. And so, yeah, I would I would say that as we move forward with Buena Vista and any other local districts, that we would want to try to keep that diversity going.
Well, it'll be amended then. So once that goes through with that process, then there would be amended that there would probably be two members from the West Side.
Right.
York Street was only one because of the small size of York Street.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rechtin?
Yes.
Mayor Caddully?
Yes. That concludes the legislation for this evening, and we move to the department head comments. Chief Pangman?
I do have something today. We will be representing all of you in Newport from afar tomorrow. Yes, and city manager will be there with us. The Newport Police Department was chosen to receive the prestigious Excellence in Education Business Engagement Award for the year of 2023. I really want to credit our staff and all the support we receive from you all. I think my staff looks at me like I'm crazy sometimes when I mandate some of the events that we go to on a regular basis because it's a lot. But they're always willing and able to make it, as I am as well, to everything we possibly can. We're very happy to serve you all and very proud to receive this award.
Thank you, chief. That's good news. Congratulations. Chief Paluso? John Hayden? Dan Braun?
What I can say is after many iterations and the paper I've gone through, I'm glad we're coming to a conclusion with regard to the extended hours of door dining. So thank you.
Tiffany?
Thanks.
City manager, from me.
Tiffany's going to training tomorrow, by the way. So it's good.
Okay, so so this is KLC, then?
This is the Spring Clerk Conference. It's down in Owensburg.
Okay, cool.
I do want to express my deepest condolences to Beth Fennell and her family on the on the passing of their mother last week. They do have a celebration of life Wednesday from 4 to 7. I think it's at the Highland Country Club for that. So that's obviously why she was not able to be at the meeting tonight for that. I do appreciate the meeting tonight. I think this was an extraordinarily productive meeting, and a lot of big things were accomplished tonight. And I think it bodes well for the future. I really do. On the Margaritaville, I'm really thrilled when I first heard this because this has been something that's been a sore spot, that empty lot there, right there on Thirteenth Street, right at the front of Levy, that empty lot that's been empty for 20 something years. So it's it's being filled in. So it really is a major step forward. And everything we did tonight is a big is a big step forward, I think. So and we got a lot of exciting things that we're working on currently for the future. So everyone needs to stay tuned on what's going on. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. Ken?
I'm going to apologize upfront because I'll be a little lengthy this evening. But first of all, I wanted to call out Kevin. And Kevin came to us last month, and he made two very valid suggestions, I thought, regarding our the openness of our meetings. He stated that all the numbers that on the screen aren't visible out in the hinterlands when we hit the view of this. And the city manager has moved in making that correction. He also made the comment, too, that there was no chat feature. And we had, and I think I brought it up during the retreat, we had a chat feature with regard to our Zoom when we were having Zoom meetings during COVID. So I had the opportunity to talk to Kevin and at the following night at a neighborhood meeting and discussed with him about that chat feature. And he brought up a couple softwares. One of them was Discourse and some other ones. And the manager is Kevin, is going to look into this and hopefully achieve this chat feature so that people can communicate us, communicate with us during the meetings. And it would also be a lovely feature to have on the website, such that somebody could ask a question and not have to, you know, find their way through the site in order to get things done and get things accomplished like.
Not to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
But I have spoke with Ms. O'Brien already about that chat feature. That's something that we're near implementation of our website. So that's something that she's going to examine about trying to implement.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure we responded to Kevin on this.
And just to let you know and for him as well, we've already had numerous conversations about that in turn.
The next thing, Saturday a week ago, and this is where it gets a little lengthy, and I apologize, about 10 a.m. in the morning, while the West Side Citizen Coalition was working with Tom Caddully and Julie Morrow and planting another 25 trees to improve the air quality and the quality of life in our neighborhoods, a fire broke out again at RMR. I don't believe there are enough trees in all of Campbell County to mitigate the damages done by the smoke from this institution. About a month ago in Palestine, it looks like Palestine, but it's Palestine, Ohio, a train derailed, causing significant pollution and air contamination. Folks were cautioned to shelter in place because of the unknown contaminants in the smoke and fumes. Then a fire broke out of the plastic factory in Richmond, Indiana. Like Palestine, there were shelter in place orders given, and there was much questioning about the fire, its cause, and the aftermath. But what do these two incidents have about RMR? The fire at RMR was underneath the train tracks, although as the chief has pointed out to me, the fire was not impinging upon the train tracks or the cars that were up above. But what if it did? Were the contents sensitive to excessive heat? Were the tank cars containing pressurized gases? The incident in Richmond, Indiana, was at a recycling facility, albeit a plastic recycling facility, which is different than scrap metal, but a recycling facility nonetheless, just like RMR, in that they, like RMR, had numerous piles of junk scattered around, and that's what led to the fire. So that Saturday morning, when I saw the plume of smoke, I went down there to the RMR site and just to witness it myself. By the time I arrived, our firefighters were on the scene, and I want to congratulate you, chief. The the men had the fire extinguished in probably 10 minutes. They were right on there putting water on the on the orange fire. And I was assured by Chief Coors that all of our men had respirators on. So but those fumes have plagued us for the rest of the day. None of our residents had respirators. We don't supply those for them. The local state EPA air quality was called and notified about the incident. And during the day, I heard many reports about the smells of fumes and noxious odors. And people were wondering if a shelter in place order or an evacuation order should have been issued or would be issued. So I began asking myself similar questions. Is there any potential harm caused by the burning of junk or the church torch burning operations at RMR site? And what chemicals are in the smoke? And they are are they harmful to us? In Campbell County, there's a division of county government called the OEM, the Office of Emergency Management, and from their website, the Office of Emergency Management is the agency in the county government that's responsible, primarily responsible, and has the authority for the planning and execution of disaster and emergency mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery for all of Campbell County. There's a lot of other things on their website, but they have that primary responsibility. So my request to the manager this evening is pretty simple, that he asks for a meeting. He convenes a meeting with all the officials of the OEM, of the Office of Emergency Management, our appropriate department heads, probably the chiefs, and the onsite management and leadership from RMR. This isn't to slap hands or slap wrists or to talk about the explosions or to talk about those things. This is to talk about what is RMR, what can and will RMR folks do to completely eliminate these fires. And speaking with the chief earlier this evening, in the last 18 months, we've had four of them. In the last, how many years? Back to 2005, we've had 11. So what is it that makes it more prevalent now? How often and what precautions does RMR? These are the questions that need to be discussed in this grouping. How often and what precautions does RMR have in place for torch cutting activities? Because they have a permit to cut with a torch down there as well. Questions that would be asked of them are what chemicals are present in the fumes and the smoke and the gases affluent from the fires or from the torch cutting? Are those fumes and are those things potentially harmful to us? I would say yes, but you know, I think that that's a question that can be posed. I can think of many other questions. Oh, the question for the OEM folks, though, is what are the plans that the OEM has? What is their disaster plans for these fires if they become excessive? Now, this didn't become excessive. No, no, the trains didn't explode, and it didn't get out of hand. But but it could have. And their plan needs to be in place. And if they do not have a plan, then they need to have one. And I think if they do have a plan, then it's time for us to review that plan in light of all this. I can think of many other questions and about these recent fires. But I believe a review of the OEM disaster plan is in order. And I don't want to be presumptuous, Tom, but and I know this is an administrative issue. This this issue has been near and dear to my heart, and I don't want to impose. I would love to be present at such a convocation, but I realize that's not warranted. I would suggest, as the executive director of the county, that the County Judge Executives Team Pendry be present, that the director of the Office of OEM, Bill Turner, and his staff members, as the executive authority of our city, you should be there. Of course, the chief of police and and the chief of fire. The RMR's Director of Operations needs to be there, and any RMR's Director of Environmental Concerns, as well as the executive director and the person who has executive authority at RMR, a general named Robert Everson should be there as well. So I would ask that you set that up. Appreciate it.
Work on it.
Okay. Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, Ken, Julie?
I'm going to come back to tonight's meeting and just say I'm I'm extremely excited about Margaritaville and the great opportunity for Newport and the region. And again, not to dwell too much on our success so far with outdoor dining and seating and extended hours work. But I I really want to say how much I appreciate the work that Tom and all the staff have put in on this over the long haul. And it represents more than just these amendments. I think it represents an awareness and a willingness to to be flexible and to look forward for change, to see when things that may have may have worked before or partially worked before need some change. And I really welcome that, and I applaud you for that. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Julie?
No.
Mike?
Tom, I just want to thank you for, I think it's a genius move to put outdoor dining and the extended hours in the same meeting because it addresses issues that some folks may have concerns over. So I think it's a really good move that we show that we want folks to have a good time, but at the same time as well, we want folks to be safe. So thank you for doing that. I think it's a very considerate move for our folks, and it's going to be very beneficial for our business owners, as well as the folks that come to Newport, to more or less relax and entertain. And Margaritaville will just be another subset to that that I think will be a very exciting destination place for folks to come to for years to come. Thank you.
What add-on what the board members just brought up to, so the true workers here are my staff. So I want the board, I'm sure you all know that, but I don't know if the public knows that. So they do a lot of work on this. So they make my job a lot easier. But there is a lot of conversation, I think people don't realize, like legal work. We have to make sure everything is legal, that it's going to withstand challenges. And we have debate after debate after debate and discussion after discussion over some of the stuff ad nauseam. It really is. And just to make sure that we're representing the city in the because we're very frugal and we're safe guardians of our money, the public's money. So we don't want to make arbitrary decisions for that. But my staff, Dan and John and Brian Stephan, the chiefs, and everybody is very conscientious. I just want you all to know that. They're very conscientious in making the right choice. We can't be 100%, but we try our best to be that way. So I appreciate your all's comments and the staff that's doing.
You're welcome. And I appreciate you taking half of my comments away. Because that's what I was going to say. Safeguard of the taxpayer. I mean, it really comes down to that. Our duty and responsibility is to ensure that we do the best job, that the taxpayers are put in the best position. And these frivolous lawsuits that occur on all fronts, that's why you spend hours. I've been in the room where you've debated and debated and debated. And at the end, you finally get to legislation that we have tonight. So thanks, all of you, for that effort. It's important, and it's appreciated. On a fun side, of course, now my phone freezes, I'm going to be taking the mayor's monarch pledge. It's the National Wildlife Federation's, and we're going to join 1,600 other mayors across the country. It's the National Wildlife Federation's, and we're going to join 1,600 other mayors across the country trying to ensure that the monarch butterfly continues to grow and prosper. It's a serious concern, they've, their habitat has been shrinking. It's actually starting, because of this program, to do better. And we're already doing a lot of the things that are required. We're planting trees, we're planting different populations of vegetation throughout our community. And all those things are going to help them in the future. So at the, after this meeting, I'm going to take this pledge and go through all the points, and I've already vetted this through city manager Fromme. But we're going to be a part of, and then at the end of December, we actually have to give a report of the things that we've done. The good news is, I know we'll be planting a lot of trees between that. I get to count the ones the other day, between now and then. But we're going to be, have to do some other things and look forward to doing it, because it's important that we take care of our environment and ensure that we can do the best we can by all of the species that live in it, and take care of our, take care of our citizens and also take care of our environment. People love to see butterflies, I know my kids do. It brightens your day. So looking forward to doing that. And then, again, I wanted to also offer my condolences to Commissioner Fennell and end the meeting with thoughts and prayers for her and her family. And I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Tiffany?
Commissioner Redwansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Morrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rektin?
Yes.
Mayor Cadulli?
Yes.